I call this meeting to order for Dr. Malice's role meeting. First, I want to intend it as public input. Yes, no, thanks.
Thank you. Erin Hennessy, one of your three state representatives for Littleton. Just want to give another update on state building aid and some other information. Can I give you a piece of paper? This is what the Commissioner of Education gave out to the House Finance Committee meeting, at the House Finance Committee meeting the other day. And what it details there prioritize requests that are going to be in the House budget when it comes out February 14th. So hopefully we will see that they've requested building aid in there. In 2020, it's 6.5 million and in 2021, it's 11.7. And what the Commissioner said when I asked him is that is the difference between $50 million and the tail of the financed or bonded building aid from years ago. So hopefully we'll see that number if the $50 million gets into the budget, we'll see that number rise over the years by the time that Littleton is eligible for its building aid. Another thing that he did mention was that he wants to fully fund the state's portion or obligation of special education. So you'll see that there's an additional 8.5 million each year in the budget for that. Fully funding the state's obligation for tuition and transportation. I don't know if this district has any transportation underfunded amounts.
No, it's funded.
Does it, is it CTC? I think so.
CTC.
Yeah.
That's funded.
Okay.
Is it not fully though?
Not fully.
I don't think it's fully.
So I will keep you updated. I probably won't have any more information until probably the end of February on how it's going and what it's looking like. So we first have to find out from the Ways and Means Committee their estimates of revenue over the next two years. And then finance can only spend what they estimate we're going to take in. So hopefully they have some high estimates.
Thank you very much.
Some of the conversations that we've heard at the State Association. At least one of their proposals calls for any building aid to be paid upfront rather than spread over the life of the project, which means we need fewer projects would be approved each year and be ready to pay the whole time.
Yeah. But there's always the chance that the building aid rules can be rewritten, but the way they are now is 80/20 where 80% will be put upfront. And I don't know if there's any bills that would change that right now. There's always a chance that somebody could put one in or they could put it on the trailer bill to the budget. So it's too early to say how that would work. They could also change the formula where instead of you get up to 60%, you get up to 15% so more schools could participate. So I just, I just don't know how that's going to happen.
A lot of the data we got this week, Tom, who will be the lead from our presentation to that joint education committees, detailed a lot of that and actually went so far as to list all of the schools in the state and what they are pre projecting their state, their building aid would be. So you're diving deep, which is good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So also, in the interest of time, we'll kind of go right through this program, this agenda. I know that all of the principal reports, we have a motion to make. We'll do that at the end of all the reports. And I think we'd have to answer one of Dale's questions on the line. So with that being said, will someone make a motion to accept the minutes of January 7th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Regarding the business report, the manifesto on the table here, Tom, do you have anything else in the future area?
Just that we do have the MS 26, which is the proposed budget report, the warrants, and the default budget, all to be posted not later than Monday. So we're posting them by Friday. I do have a couple of extra signature pages and we'll make the appropriate copies and distribute them from there.
Okay. Thank you.
And can I just make one comment because I went over the manifest this morning? That the Board of, we got a note from the Town Office saying the Board of Selectment had voted to raise the billing rate for the police officers who cover our gangs and stuff, I guess. So it's going up to $75 an hour, I believe from $62 an hour effective immediately is what the note said. So I think it'll be for the remainder of the season. And it says there's a four-hour minimum on that. I just wanted to.
I needed to know that.
Yeah, so that's, that was in the manifest. So just to give people the heads up of that. I know we probably haven't budgeted appropriately now based upon that, but, but that's just FYI. Is that all games? All games? I'm not really sure.
It's just high school.
Like high school games.
It's just varsity.
Varsity.
Janey dance.
Yeah, okay.
Which is running my school.
Yeah.
Wow.
But they're only, I mean, the games are what, three hours? So we pay for the extra hour if it's a four-hour minimum. Is that covered in gate fees?
That's in our budget. It's in our budget. The gate fees go to the student needs, the athletic accounts.
And then the other thing I noticed that there were, I'm looking forward to the van being useful because there were, in the manifest, there were three trips it looked like that we could have used the van for at a cheaper method. So hopefully the van we purchased will become available and we'll be able to start using it soon. Do we have any delivery information on that?
The vehicle is in, doing some lettering. We've got a special inspection that needs to be done as a school bus and there's a second training session, I believe, for the drivers. So I guess we're almost there.
Okay. And I have asked superintendent for us to drive us, which I have no idea. Thank you. Anything besides the business report? Here's that. Unfinished business. We have a school calendar that I understand needs to be adjusted from January 10th, I believe next year to January 17th, which is the Friday before Civil Rights Day.
Jen and I were actually on the phone talking about our PD day that we had in January. And it's really, it seems really close to have it that early in January after vacation. And next year, we have two weeks of vacation at Christmas. So to come back and have it right off the bat seems like too early. And we notice a lot of others, yeah, a lot of other districts do it the Friday before Civil Rights Day.
So that's a third motion to accept, the calendar? I think we don't start approving these calendars till January or February of next year. Till it all gets worked out.
So we view that was coordinated before.
But that's all.
That's right.
When I did, yeah.
What's the date? Did you want it?
This was an act of thought.
Since 17th, just by giving it up a week. Okay. So, so what we have, it hasn't changed that yet. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
So motion to approve the revised 1920 calendar, please.
So moved with the revision being moving the staff development day from Friday, January 10th to Friday, January 17th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to do the deliberative session planning a little bit later if the board doesn't mind. Principal reports, if you'd like to be quick, do so.
Was there any question? We can.
Well, I've got to say, any questions for Kelly? Has anybody yet read the reports? I know she's had a big increase of 138 students.
Actually, today it was 142. So I requested some transfers from another district for students that had moved in.
Okay.
Yeah.
So these are new students to the district or new?
Some are new to the district and some are.
Getting picked up from elementary or kindergarten.
Yeah, just new referrals. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions further for Kelly? Jennifer.
Quick thank you to Union Bank for providing the curriculum for the above-the-nod personal finance class. In Simon's Market, they donated $500 in conjunction with Mobile Exxon to enhance our math and science programs. So Simon's Market, thank you. Our LHS players did a great job in their, their dinner theater performance of Desperate Housewives of Shakespeare. I, I think we'll need to make a motion at some point for the money acceptance.
Yeah.
But if you have any, oh, Crusader Community Collaborative is scheduled Tuesday, January 29th at 6:00 PM. That's something I've been trying to do every other month with our families. And I sent that out for them to consider joining us for competency conversations. And Chamber of Commerce is recognizing their Student of the Year, Joe DePalma IV, tomorrow night at the children's dinner. And All Saints and Toastmasters are sponsoring a public speaking class for students, which I think is great community partnership. It'll be paid for by, by them. So it's not like our kids are paying out. March 5th for six consecutive Tuesdays from 4:00 to 6:00. It's kind of between seasons. I think that's when we felt it was best for our kids to attend. So and then that's all.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
For the Community Collaborative?
Yes.
Can you talk about the next steps?
Yep.
That you're looking at. Can you give us an idea of what?
So what I, what mine, the next steps is going to be looking at putting together a parent-teacher-student group.
Okay.
To look at what other schools have been doing, where they've been finding their success and how we'll move forward with that. We'll talk about some of the challenges and some of the benefits.
Okay. Yeah, I think like having people know what you're thinking about will maybe help drive them there.
So I'm hoping that that information, that conversation can shift to a smaller study group.
Okay.
Who then, between now and towards the end of the year, we can take a really strong look at other schools' successes and challenges and probably draw upon Ellen Hume Howard's knowledge and the transition that other schools have gone through. And however, it's very different, individualized, but where we are and where we can be.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I also noticed that we have 10 students that exited in January, which is pretty nice to me.
Yep.
Just curious.
That exited?
That left.
We had students move. We had students transfer. We've had withdrawal to homeschool. So we've had some different situations.
Out of that 10?
Mm-hmm.
Those are the different things?
Yep. They're all over in very personal reasons.
You, you track that, Jen?
Yep.
You do?
And I've met with most of the families. So I know the whys and understand their goals.
Good.
And some, when we say withdrawn, they might be still part-time with us, but either being homeschooled and coming part-time like homeschoolers, we have that as well. And you can see some of the notes, the notes there.
Now?
Just quickly, some of the highlights. We continue to discuss dental pathways. Supposed to have a meeting tomorrow, NHTI. We, as you know, we have a yearly college fair, a career fair should be, I'm sorry. We're discussing this year bringing SEU 35, 36, and ourselves together for a much larger fair. We're in there discussions on that. We have started the discussion with area counselors on recruiting. We had a meeting last week with all area guidance counselors to talk about opening our doors for visitors, us going to their schools, talking about our program. So that's started already for next year. Lisbon will be the first school of visiting. They will bring their entire sophomore class, all 25 of them, for the visit. As I mentioned, I'll be going to Concord tomorrow, but a part of the board that I'm on representing directors around the state, we're going to meet with the Commissioner of Ed tomorrow evening around 4:00. Because you've heard a lot of information on the news, in papers regarding Learn Everywhere and New Hampshire Career Academy. So we'll be talking with him and trying to get his insight on what, what he really is hoping to do with those initiatives. And I understand that you'll probably hear from Steve that he's planning a visit on Monday with us here as well. And just let you know that part of our midterm assessments, all of our programs have to have a third-party assessment. The state has chosen precision assessments. So we, most of our programs are engaged in those precision midterm exams last week. Kind of get a sense of where we are leading up to the end of the year. So those are the highlights.
So with the commissioner's visit on Monday, the 28th, we have sat down with Steve and I think at the very end of his visit, he will meet with the board here. And I'm not sure what the timeframe is yet, so we should be getting that out to everybody.
It said, we got a meeting from 2:45 to 3:30, I think. It said administration and the board.
Excuse me?
2:40 to 3:30.
2:40.
What day is that?
Monday.
Next move?
28.
2:40 or what time?
3:30. 1:00 he'll be at Lakeway, who I am from.
You are?
Oh.
You are. It's a great.
2:00 toward the tech center. 2:40 here with the board and administrators and 3:30 a visit above the notch. Thanks.
I think it's on the desk in the aisle. On the table.
It's on the little table.
Are you going to cut it out and mail it to my grandmother?
No, we're going to put it on the camera.
Okay, Dale.
Just real quick, I'll skip over the questions and come back to those. Updated facility review there. We're still waiting on the finalized report from the DOE regarding school, I forget what Crystal and I had back in September. The report's due any day, I assume. It's now five months since we did the walk. But everything that is highlighted red on that list that's attached is not completed. Most are planned for February vacation. Some have to wait till the snow grows away. Three projects scheduled for Christmas break, I mean Christmas break, February vacation. Yeah, we're going backwards in time. The academy windows, the HVAC unit at the high school, and then the lead testing, which would get us in compliance. Thank you to Greg, Billy, and Ryan Kelly for raising the batting cage at the Daisy Bronson. They raised it about 16 inches. I've talked to multiple men's league players, not a single ball hits the net. They're happy. I'm assuming that the same is true for Parks and Rec. Technology, I think I asked in my last report for permission to work with our internet service provider to initiate another contract since we were coming to an end. After more research, it's actually against our e-rate reimbursement obligations to do it that way. So everybody gets a chance to bid on it. So they will bid on it as well and then we make our decision. But we get reimbursed 70% of whatever the contract is. So currently, our contract is 17.7 and I believe we just received a reimbursement check last month for $12,000 and change that goes back towards that. So we'll do it the right way and make sure we still get reimbursed.
Where do those funds come from, from the rebate?
It's part of your telephone bill.
Okay, so, but what?
It's collected by the Federal Communications Committee.
Okay, and so it's sent from them? Okay. Thank you.
So the two questions I had is, I continue to talk almost daily with the roofing company. Obviously, the snow did not help yesterday with the repairs. But their estimate for going high-end, four days at Lakeway, a day and a half at the high school, and at the high-end of $3,200 per day, that's $17,500. There's not a repaired buildings account in any location that has that. In fact, the repair to buildings at Lakeway is negative at this point. So that's, that was my question is how?
Repair to buildings? We don't have an account in all of your areas.
Yeah, none of them have that much money off of them.
There's not, the highest amount that's left is at the high school. It has just under $5,000 left. So the high school one can probably be taken care of, but the bigger problems are at Lakeway. Shocking. No.
Two ventilators that were repaired yesterday are two of the brand-new ones.
Oh, do we have any?
What happened to them?
Warranty or anything? I know that's firing question that you, but.
So both units are wall units, outdoor wall units. The same thing that we talked about a few months ago. We talked to the facilities too.
Moving the thermostat?
Moving the thermostat out.
Oh, okay.
But, but it caused one of the copper pipes to freeze and burst. So when Crystal called me yesterday at 10:40, I get, we got down there and yeah, she took pictures. I was mopping with the machine, but it was just spewing hot water directly up out of the units onto the floor. And we had, we got, we got it shut off and thankfully it was able to be soldered. You know, sometimes you don't get lucky if it's too big, but we were able to.
The Kays had it fit within an hour, so that was good.
But it's brand-new and they were.
But it was caused by the thermostat location, not?
Yes. Well, and there's a.
Flow rate, the flow rate was only set at 10%. They put it up to 100. I mean, you can't do that on all of them, but obviously that side of the building doesn't get a lot of sun. So it's.
Where was it?
Backside by the playground.
Okay.
So it was a first-grade classroom.
First grade, yeah. Close to the loop.
So that shouldn't happen again now that they've moved the thermostat?
Scott now knows how to readjust the valve setting, so he's going to check all the other ones.
Okay.
Because there was an issue across the hall with it not generating enough heat. But I think the issue that we found in the one first-grade classroom was the same in the other one, but being on the loop side, they get a little more sun on the building. So it didn't create as much of an issue. But Scott now knows how to check it without having to call the Kays in, so he's going to be doing it on all the new year valuables just to be sure.
So did it cost us money or?
It will.
So there's no recourse for, for warranty or?
That wouldn't, I, my guess is that wouldn't be covered because it's not a manufacturer's defect.
Okay.
So does building defect fall under? That's really all it did. I mean, you, like, the first thing we did, we touched the wall. I mean, there's no insulation there, obviously, on that wall.
We were told that.
What's that?
We were told that by Cal Mark, that there's no insulation in those walls.
So we're going to continue to, you know, work with that.
Obviously, it's the cold days and hopefully adjusting the flow rate will keep the water going through the pipes more frequently. At 10%, I mean, it just wasn't calling for enough. But if you do that to all of them, then the circulator pump that serves it, then you're not going to have adequate heat wherever.
Well, who'll set those up at 10%?
That would have been the installer.
And it wasn't enough?
You know, in answer to your question, Dale, I don't have an answer specifically about which account we can take this money out of. I hear what you're saying. We absolutely have to fix those loops. So I think we're going to have to get a recommendation from Steve and Tom where we're going to find that money.
Yeah, we have a facilities committee meeting on the first, so.
Fourth is a Monday.
Or the Thursday.
Curse is a Friday.
Oh, yeah, mistypled, yeah, my bad. So that's right, it's top of the report, fourth. Good job.
So maybe if we can get that information by then, we'll have it better.
Well, yeah, I don't think they can do the work. My understanding is with the amount of snow at this point anyways, with what we've got. But.
They're looking also at February vacation again.
Okay.
We did send, who ended up coming back? Alex or Kelly?
Kelly and Matt.
Matt. We cleared the roof drains today, so with the rain.
So hopefully that will prevent the leaking in the kindergarten wing that we have in the fall with the leaves, like that stuff.
That's good.
Trying to stay ahead of it.
Yeah. And you're, and you're doing the measuring of the amount of load on, I know there was some process for that.
No, there's not, yeah, me neither. But no, Alex, I talked to Alex yesterday. We're, we're good.
Okay.
But first off, it was light snow. Yeah, the rain's going to make it heavier, but.
Right.
It was two years ago, there was almost 40 inches of snow and there's less than a foot and a half on the top of Lakeway right now. So we're good.
All safety precautions are being performed.
Everything we can do.
With Alex up on the roof.
Has been done. Everything we can do has been done.
Oh, yeah, we just have him jump off.
Yeah, no kidding. I hear you both saying.
Plenty of snow on there.
I'm going to have an Alex.
Kids take that big parachute.
Yeah, hopefully the new building has like indoor like roof hatch to go on.
Yes. Put that down.
I have a question on your facility review checklist, which was in September.
Yes.
Regarding that information, does whoever have to know, know about that these things have to be done? I know you had a person leave around a little after that.
Yep. So the lady from the DOE, these were her notes that she provided, we walked and provided. She then shared them with us.
Yep.
So then we update her what we had done with photos and then she compiles her final report. She was waiting for the health inspection, which was completed just before Christmas break.
Right, yeah.
And that has been sent.
Yep, and we have talked since then by email and she says she has everything she needs at this point. But then there'll be a timeframe once we get her report back as to when the things on her report need to be completed.
Are we still in the timeline to receive her report? I thought it was just 90 days after.
Well, no.
Well, I'm looking at number 17, which talks about the walk-in freezer.
Yep.
Has to have, you have, let's see, not 17. It has to do with the temperature. So who's monitoring that temperature daily? Is it the security folks?
That's their responsibility.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and they are.
So who is the responsibility it's been assigned to? Is that Ben Nunn? You know what I'm saying?
The conversation was with Tabby and she, either her or whomever she designates at Lakeway to test it.
Yeah. And anything else on here that might be given to somebody different?
Correct.
Okay.
Including the next one, which is 17 about product being on the floor and the walk-in freezer.
Right, right.
Was communicated.
All right.
Tom, Tom, just, so I'm hoping as an action item that we, that for our facilities meeting on the first, we can talk about where we can maybe find that money before we come back to the full board.
I'm looking, moving as we speak.
Okay. Fabulous. So if and where we can find it. If we can't find it, we're going to have to tap some towels. Yeah, but.
I'll sign here, take it out of his budget.
Kino?
Right. But we just have to.
And speaking of which, has the state been billed for what we've done so far with the other funding, infrastructure funding? You're waiting for the final day, is that it?
No, I'm waiting to come up for air.
You're working on what?
I'm waiting to come up for air.
Okay. He's a little busy, so he's got to say.
Well, I'm just, you know, be hard.
We have collected the invoices.
Okay. So they're ready to go.
We need to put the cover sheets together and the certifications for the board to sign off on and.
Okay. Thank you. So Lakeway.
That's what Dale updated the facilities, so those are still coming up. I attached the thank you letter from Congresswoman Custer, Amy Custer, for the holiday cards. We did that again.
We did that again. Jen, we're going to take over this. We had four sixth grade students participate in the Young Writers Spooky Saga Contest this year, and all four were chosen for publication.
That's cool.
So, they, they will, we will get a copy of the book. The students will get a copy of the book, and a copy of it will be posted in the Library of Congress.
That's pretty neat.
So, they are very excited about that.
That's pretty neat.
Title One Night was awesome, one hundred and seventy participants. Huge thank you to Steph, Wyman, Mel Harkless, and Ethel Wowe for doing all that. That was wonderful. And the sixth grade leaders volunteered to do the games. Fifth and sixth grade geography bee, Claudia Canuto was our winner this year. Her brother was the winner last year, so it's friends in the family. She's taking the online assessment the twenty-fourth to see if she qualifies for states, and she wants to qualify for states, so she's been working on that. As you saw in the paper, the governor was here last week. If there's any questions about that, somebody will roll with me for that. And then just today, we received notice, so I just added this, if you've read the report earlier.
I saw that.
We got an email today that Food for Kids, sponsored by Cedro Rodriguez, raised over thirteen thousand dollars with their fundraising effort, and will be able to pay off our debt to this point for lunch, lunch debt.
I saw that program on the.
That is pretty new, yeah.
That on Channel Nine.
He's a wonderful human.
Something.
He's a great guy, so.
So, is that for all the debt, including the high school?
It was, that's just Lakeway. That's, Jen was included on the same email, so she just barely got the email, but they'll pay off the high school debt as well, which I don't know.
Okay. Oh, absolutely.
Well, I think we should send an email.
They sent that formal email.
We don't have a check.
We received it, yeah.
Yeah, she filled out the paperwork today, and he usually deliver, hand delivers them to all the schools, but I thought it was exciting to know that.
Okay, well, you know.
He added us this year, so.
Fantastic.
That's awesome.
So, I'll send him a note when you get it, please, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I'll suck it.
I don't think, is there any other reports?
Nobody here.
Red mouths.
I'd just like to mention, because the governor has mentioned, as you know, we've been involved for many, many years in youth in government. The CFP has been, has done for years, and most recently, Mr. Tilton and Mrs. Brodean have championed that. And Joel DePalmer was selected in Region One to run for governor of Youth in Government, so he'll be representing us in the North Country, running for government.
That is cool. Thanks for sharing. That's good.
We didn't vote for Joel.
I will. Boy, just regurgitating all these things that got brought up tonight. We're doing something right. Oh, you are. Somebody is.
Off the pressure, I personally.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, I think that the instructional coordinator's report is on here.
Cory Nicole will report next month. Steve told her to go home today, but just regarding the mental health report, the first newsletter went out. I don't know if you've had a chance to see it, but it went out to, it was on the Facebook and Twitter.
Every student at Lakeway went there.
The website, and hard copies went home with every student. So, I think the topic was what is SEL or social emotional learning? So, starting that process.
I have a copy of it. Could you?
Yeah, Cory Nicole was going to bring that tonight, but she's not here, so yeah.
We can check the Twitter feed too, I guess.
Yeah, and it's on the website as well.
All right.
Okay, thanks. That's good to know.
So, community reports, personnel. Review date and review job description. And we presented one tonight, I guess? Yeah, we'll be presenting one. The post. And guess she made the message. Okay. Pardon me?
It's on the drive, but I wasn't told that it was going to be approved tonight.
Okay.
Send you a non-public photo.
Okay, would you look at it first? Okay, facilities, February fourth.
Yes.
Seven thirty. See that?
I'll come before too, just in case.
Oh, sure. Policy map today. We did four policies, which will be coming up by next meeting on February fourth. The superintendent is on his way home. Traffic and whatever else is in his way. So, I'm not sure we have a report. Depending on where he's coming from, because the soft truck, did you get by those? It's twenty-five miles an hour. No, I know. He called me at like two thirty, telling me that, so. Anyway, I guess the next thing is we can go into non-public.
I'll make a motion to go up to ten thirty.
What? Look at the house, Danny. So, I'll have one extra form if anybody wants one. I have one.
Did Greg get one? Because he wasn't there last night.
Yeah, I said it by e-mail, but I guess. This is the deliver session prep. It talks about, first article, the election of offices. And then the next article, too, would be the bond article. So, I guess at that one, I just need to know how we're going to present that, if Steve has any ideas of doing part of it, or what we've been doing, like we have in the budget sessions, so I'm not sure. Other than that, I'll look, I'll look and find out. Well, I think it's laid out pretty well with the slide and the budget, two budget meetings, we've had about the same thing. So, I think just follow that format.
Well, it's pretty long, what we've got going on right now. And so, that's my only concern, is that we may not be able to get through it all in one night if there's a lot of discussion.
Well, the thing, the thing is, we now have two weeks to, for everybody to work on the presentation, so I can work with.
Two whole weeks?
And Steve and Tom on that.
Okay.
Okay. The next one, of course, is our operating budget. And what I did was I just put the code numbers down here. Now, if you want to combine some of them, that's fine with me, but the lines mean who's going to report on it. So, regular education, I have one line. Then the twelve hundreds is special ed, alternative program, ESOL, and gifted and talented. Then vocational education. Then I have fourteen hundred, sixteen hundred, twenty-one twelve, and twenty-one thirteen, which goes from student activities to adult continuing ed, safety, literacy, and social workers in another section. And the next section has to do with guidance, student assistance, health, psychological, speech, physical motif, improvement in instruction, and educational media. Then I have the school board section, which includes the school board, the superintendent, administration, the business office, operations and maintenance, which will include that area, bus driver, transportation, other vehicle, and information. And then property services, and the debt services, and default budget, I'm going to be tall.
I just think we could probably comment about that, right?
Probably about that.
That's actually spoken out.
Does anybody have any thoughts where they'd like to talk, what they want to talk about? And then for the third page, there is just potential questions, and those are what I thought of, but if you can think of more, you can add it for yourself. So, where do you want to start, anybody?
Are we working lots of PowerPoint like we had in the past where taking, so do we have that to kind of see, is that split exactly this way as well?
I took it right off the budget that was passed out last night, those codes. It's like this. I think she walked it down.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I'm willing to do anything. So, if anybody has strong feelings about something, so, but I, it doesn't matter. Okay. So, the other concern, I know in the past is, well, I don't want to get up, sit down, get up, sit down, get up, sit down. So, if you think some of these areas should be combined, you're left. Somebody do both eleven, twelve, and thirteen, or however you want to do it. I mean, I'll start with the bond issue. If you want me to do regular ed, I can do that. And special education, that part? Yeah, it's right on your listing there. I got it. Is that what you said? I didn't hear you say, I'm sorry. No, I said, who wants to do? Oh, I thought you said, I'll do it. I said, okay.
So, the, like, where you have, at the very bottom of the first page, you have two twenty, twenty-two, twenty-one, and then twenty-two, twenty-two, with the signature line. Is that person doing everything above it from twenty-one, twenty down?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay. I mean, I'll take that section, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-two.
You want me to do the contract, or you want to do that again, or what, how do you want to handle that? What are your premises? Do you want to do the contract? I'm, I'm okay to do it, but if you want to do it, I'm okay with you doing it, so.
What's, what's twenty-three, twenty-three, ten through twenty-five? Is that pretty straightforward?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So, I'll just, I'll. I'll finish with twenty-five. Just keep me up there through twenty-five.
Okay.
Because I'm looking at it, it's like, that usually is pretty quick, that whole section.
According to twenty-four hundred, which is the school ed.
Is it in there?
Yeah, yes.
Twenty-three, ten, twenty, twenty-four, ten, and eleven.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Okay. So, anybody else keep order? Keep order. Yeah, we can talk about teachers' contracts afterwards. This is just the budget and stuff. So, so do you have twenty-six hundred and twenty-seven, twenty? I kind of lost track there.
No, I stopped at twenty-five.
Okay, I'll do that.
You want to do twenty-six hundred and down to twenty-eight, forty-four?
Yep. No, I don't want you to do it. You know that. Well, do you want to do some?
I mean, down, whatever.
I was going to say, that's what I was going to say. Do you have a preference?
No. I can prepare for any of them. Doesn't matter.
Do we want to put thirteen hundred either with, like, from twelve hundred to thirteen hundred? Yeah. Like, from special education down to vocational education? Block that. I would. And then the fourteen hundred to twenty-one thirteen? Oh, I see what you're saying. So, who wants, who wants to do twelve hundreds, the twelve hundreds and the thirteen hundreds? Is that what I'm hearing? You say? Yeah, it's reminding if we wanted to. Twelve hundred all the way down? Because they're way after the others, so if the same person wants to do it. I'll, I can, I'll do that. Which one, twelve? She was going to do the twelve and thirteen hundred. Okay, is that all right? Yeah. Yeah, good. So, what am I right? So, then the next one is the fourteen hundreds, which is the student activities, adult continuing ed, twenty-one, twelve, safety, and social worker. You want me to do that? Sure. Isn't this revenue?
Does it make sense for, have we had, Tom, have you done like the debt services, the transfer of food service, the transfers to capital funds? Have you done that in the past? It almost makes sense that you just do that and then roll right into the default budget?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, you probably should do the four thousand, because those are the dollar accounts.
Right, property services, yeah.
Four thousand, five thousand into the default budget. Okay. So, then I'll do the bond, and I'll do the regular ed, and then I think we're all set now. Right? Well, let's, can we recap? Sure. All right, so, we'll get up and talk about the bond part, and then after that is done, I'll do regular education. Okay? Kim is going to do all of the twelve hundreds, the thirteen hundreds, and the thirteen hundreds. Leslie's going to do the fourteen hundred through twenty-one thirteen, and then Greg is going to do twenty-one, twenty through twenty-two, twenty-two. Correct?
Yep.
And you're also going to do the school board while you're there.
Pure, yep.
And then twenty-six hundred through twenty-eight, forty-four, Millie's going to do. And then Tom will do four thousand to the default budget. Okay? Everybody clear as mud?
Very good.
Collective bargaining agreement.
You're going to talk on this, is that?
Kim's decided.
Or is that you, well, you and Leslie, right?
Yeah. So, Leslie, you want to do that?
I will do it if you would like me to, yep.
Okay. Usually, I noticed I put the motion there, but usually you would motion that when it gets ready, because sometimes Gerald reads the warrant article, sometimes he doesn't.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Okay.
And then the article five, the special meeting, that is just in case article four is defeated.
Just doing. So, will Steve help with the, the article about the bond, Lakeway and all that?
I'm thinking that we've got two weeks, so I would say to anybody, come in and see Steve and Tom about any of your areas, or anybody else that you need to get clarity on, and then you can develop whatever you're going to say, and we'll get the PowerPoint going. I was just going to say, there will be a PowerPoint slide. There should be, there should be a PowerPoint. Because we tied into that. I prefer to get up there. I don't prefer to get up there at all, but when I do, I don't care to use the clicker and all that, so I, I can be honest with you. I wonder if that was going to be the efficient, same, same format. We can let Dale do the clicking if he wants. Dale will be my clicker.
Put him on time, like you got twelve seconds.
That guy.
Okay. Are you, are you thinking with the?
It's been sitting here like for a while.
Just because we're not, we're really just going to have one more meeting right before the deliberating, so I'd rather talk a little bit about it sooner rather than later, because that.
We're going to have, the deliver session is February?
Six.
Six.
We're two weeks from.
And we have a board meeting on the fourth.
Right, but we can't.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I would rather, I mean, that's going to be hard to shift the presentation and stuff at that point. So, I guess, I just wanted to, particularly for trying to get the Lakeway article passed, you know, and that, I just wanted to talk about what we're going to present. Is it, because.
Well, I think.
What we've been doing is pretty long. That's, are we going to show the video? Are we going to do all this stuff at this, too? That's what I'm trying to find out.
Yeah.
I thought Steve said he was planning on doing the video.
Okay. Well, I think you and I should come in together to meet with Steve and get this all figured out, maybe the PowerPoint adjusted.
Oh, okay. I mean, I would, I would be like to know what other people think, and that's kind of a question.
Are they going to do that? Lakeway presentation?
That's, that's what we, we're not clear on yet. We're not clear on yet. He mentioned something about it last night.
The only thing I have about that is it's two hours as it is anyways, and then we have to write on and secret ballot and all this and that.
I just would be good to get it done in one night. It's not like we haven't presented the information.
Right, right.
But I, I don't know if we, if we can condense that presentation.
Can you have the other presentation available on paper and then just do in a bridge version that night, like the final results, if you want to look at all the other sections?
Yeah, I agree. I love that concept.
It's available there. It's also available on video times a hundred meetings, and just do where they ended their decision and the video. I mean, the video's pretty telling, but.
Yeah, I think the video looks more shocking, don't you think? Because it's, because not everyone's going to have seen that.
Right, and there'll be people who've seen it.
And you can't always see it that well. I don't know what it looks like on the, on the television when you see it. I don't.
It's a little harder. It's definitely clearer during the presentations.
Okay.
But I think a lot of people are going to be repeat visitors, so definitely be some new people there. I think having it available, if you want the entire history of where the fact ended their decision, here it is. We're just going to review.
I agree.
Where's, what was the recommendation?
Rational. People will hear bullets anyway.
Yeah, because it's a lot to go back and, you know, through all of that.
Yeah. I mean, what do you think is a realistic amount of time to do a presentation on that part? Would you say, like, to introduce that warrant and to, I mean, to sort of give background before we open it up to questions and stuff? I know Steve said he's going to have Kyle Barker and the.
ABS.
Yeah, the construction people. But what do you, do you think, ten minutes? Is that too long? I mean, how long's the video been?
I think ten minutes is, the video's been a little over. I think 10 minutes is, the video's a little over five.
Five, okay. So maybe, so we got about a five, say six-minute video, and then...
I think if you have, if you show the picture of the plan and have the bond explained, and then, I do think it's helpful to explain the piece that we have to be shovel-ready by this date, so this is our last opportunity.
Yes, I do too.
I think that people understand that. We're not asking for the building project right now, we're asking to be prepared to do the building project when the money's available.
Right.
I think short and sweet and simple, and then having that, I'm sure Kyle will bring the bigger version of the diagram. Having him there for questions like he was before, there were very few questions and they answered them very well. And I think people that have been pretty big naysayers in the class were very content with their answers, so. That's my vote.
I was just gonna say that I think people really believe that it's time for a new school. So highlighting the process moving forward, highlighting what you're voting on. And some update on information you don't really know about building aid, but just give people the update. And I think it's important to highlight what we already are spending for our debt and when that is coming to, when that's gonna reach us.
Yeah, those options that Ron, right, last night, did, you know?
Right.
First choice is that building aid comes back and we're shovel-ready. Second choice is that we wait till the bonds are paid off. Third choice is still up in the air, you know? Those are pretty easy to understand steps.
So sounds like if we could get that condensed into those different points, into five or six minutes, you show the video and then we're out for, that sounds realistic, maybe?
I think the Leefac committee and all the budget hearings and presentations, I think the word is out there and I think people have a pretty solid understanding, so I don't, you know?
And it is accessible on the website too, there's lots of information there. So let's jot that down in our conversations with Steve about that we're looking for about six minutes on the video and five minutes on the presentation.
It's like, I think it's just around, right around five minutes.
Yeah.
Right around the five minutes.
Two minutes total. Ten to get it started, four to show it.
And it would be, you know, I know this is, I wouldn't mind once we have our, if we get our presentation together, but to kind of, I would, it'd be nice to run it by the administration and get their feedback, because you guys have really, you know, you could give us some good constructive criticism, which would be helpful, so.
Because you will have time, you know, you're really asking to put that warrant on for people to vote. You know, you have time between deliberative and when people vote and have maybe an open session or some information as well. One, you can, if someone's... You're really asking to have that on the ballot. And I think that will, then the challenging part is the 60%.
Right.
Having a little campaign leading up to the vote.
But it might even be nice, the tours, to have dates set that we can share that night.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah, and we can even have like a piece of paper.
Yes, I think it would be better to have the tour set, so that if people want to come into the building, you have somebody there to take them around, and a date, and a time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can kind of do some at different times a day, because everybody's got, you know, different schedules, but that, yeah, that could be... Okay.
And the temporary vacation is before the vote, isn't it? I don't know, that's a good thing, but I can think about it.
So...
Yeah.
Are you just gonna say that, ask yours, or do you want, does somebody else need to get up and do that one? The special meeting, the... I don't know, you do have to do it, it's simple.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
So Steve had one question, it sounded like about how we're gonna put the impact of the tax, right? That, you know, based upon the current year's assessed value, right? Was that something he wanted to know, if we're gonna put that on the warrant? Or not? Okay.
Revenue does not recommend it.
Okay.
Neither does counsel.
Okay, hey, that's clear. I answered my question.
But we should, we should have a slide.
I agree. No, I agree we should have a slide, but I thought there was some other question about if we're gonna put it on the warrant, and that is an answer to it.
It's not on the warrant that everyone else has signed up on.
Okay.
All right, so. Any further questions at this time?
So just to clarify, you want, do you want me to set up some specific times that people can sign up for a tour and have it ready to sign up at the deliberative?
I think Steve is working with the Leefac Communications Committee on it. I just checked in email that they were going back and forth on...
Can you just make sure that one of them lets me know?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions regarding the deliberative session?
Thanks for putting this out.
Yeah.
That's super helpful.
It is.
Accepting money, maybe?
What's that?
But accepting funds from...
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say though, that usually what happens, if you could say Article II or whatever, the article numbers I've had, because motion to approve, or however that's written, we usually write our names in and just hand it to Gerroth, who hands it to you, or something. We used to do that.
Yeah, we used to put down who was gonna do the motion, I, and then the board was gonna sit on it on a piece of paper.
So if that's the case, we don't, we'd need a, for Article III on here? I'm assuming that Anne, you would make the motion, since you're up.
Right here.
Oh, yeah, just to second, yeah.
Right, so I would imagine Anne would make the motion and then you second it.
That's why I'm doing regular education, because I make the motion, somebody will second it.
Right.
And then Gerroth will say, who wants to discuss it?
Right.
So then I'll get up and we'll just flow through.
Right.
Who's gonna second it?
Oh, gee.
I can second it.
Kim. Thanks. That's done, you know?
Who's seconded it with Article II? The bondee. I'm, Kim's gonna second it, I guess. Or anybody else for that, man? And Article IV? In Article IV, likely I'm gonna make the motion and Anne's gonna second it.
Right.
And five.
Five, I'm gonna make the motion.
I'll second it, I wanna second, all right.
Do we have, is Article I an actual motion with first and second?
No, I think it's just, it's the election, well, it's just a free to...
Thanks.
We're not gonna, I'm not gonna say that today. Something about the, no, the second reports.
No, no, we're not gonna get into that.
So do we have clarification on, I know it's posted on the calendar that we have a snow date for the deliberative session? And my understanding is that Gerroth is the person who makes that call, or is that accurate? And I just want to have it, I just want to know really clearly right now what we're gonna do if there's a massive storm, so that we all know. And what is, what we can and can't do legally?
I have tentative snow date of the day after. Last time we had that problem, the moderator has the legal right to reschedule the deliberative, which is what happened last time. And we moved it to the following evening. Is the snow day legal? It's posted as a snow day, so we're okay there.
It was last time too, though.
Right, so what was the difference from the last time?
Well, the last time we were being questioned at the number of days it had been posted, we were in the right, it had to be seven days.
So we technically didn't need the...
Probably.
Session that was out last night?
No, that's, two different issues.
Is that?
Apparently, the appropriate action would have been to open the meeting, said we're going to postpone the meeting because of the snow.
Okay.
Close the meeting and then have it the next night, and that would have been fine.
Right.
Okay.
Rather than being challenged, I would hope if we have to do the same thing with deliberative, it doesn't hurt to do it.
Yes, it does.
It might hurt to not.
Well, it hurts a lot.
You don't have many meetings.
No, but let's say we have a snowstorm for the deliberative session. Do you have to open the meeting, close it for a snowstorm, and resume the next evening?
I'll verify that.
I think Gordon would recommend that, but that really is up to the moderator.
But it's interesting, so you have somebody come for the deliberative session, it's snowing like, it's snowing.
And then you tell them to go home.
And then you say, oh, we're gonna reconvene this tomorrow night, or whatever the date happens to be, and everybody go.
As opposed to no one showing up because they heard that there was a meeting?
You never know on this place.
If nobody shows up, that may not be a bad thing. I think that was rationale, is everyone knew that the first night was the night of the meeting.
Right.
Not everyone perhaps knew that it had been postponed. So you open the meeting, postpone it.
So we're posting now with the snow date listed as a possibility, so, okay.
It was the following day.
And really, we would only do this if there was a massive storm, or, you know...
Post is before all of the...
On this stuff. Okay.
For people's safety.
Right, no, that's what I mean, yeah.
But it doesn't get canceled if they cancel school activities after school like they did today? Like today, they cancel a lot after school activities, but we resumed our board meeting. If they cancel after school activities on the deliberative session, can we still have the deliberative session?
Is there a snow date for the town, because isn't that the date before us?
They don't usually post a snow date. They just go...
So, so we're coming down no matter what, is the answer to this, so.
Yes.
At least three of them.
Yeah, let me know if you need a pickup.
I will, I will. I'll ride in your car rather than mine. Thank you. All right, what else?
Great. Do you have some money to accept?
Oh, yeah, we need a motion to accept the $500 from Simons for a special project regarding math and science. I think that's what it is.
To appropriate same...
I made the motion, we accept the donation of $500 from Simons, oh, I'm sorry, you?
And appropriate it to math and science as...
Math. I was okay.
You got that, Patty?
I made the motion that we accept the donation of $500 to be used for appropriating through math and science that was donated by Simons. And mobile, yes, mobile, excellent.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I think we're all set for now, because we're gonna have to meet with them regarding your comments on moves and projects.
Jen, do you have another one? No, it was just a... Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
And the board thanks the gentleman who paid off the food...
Isidro Rodriguez.
Yes.
What's his name?
Isidro Rodriguez. Food for kids.
Okay, thank you. We need to go into non-public, for three minutes.
I'll make a motion to enter, I'll make a motion to enter into non-public session under paragraph two, section three of the RSA 91A colon three of the right to know law for number two, the hiring of any person as a public employee. And number three, matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board, taking with us the superintendent, the business manager, and Patty?
Do we need the...
Yes, no?
Do we need number seven?
Oh, and do we need number seven? Seven, considering, consideration by the board of entering into a student or pupil tuition contract authorization by RSA 194 or RSA 195A.
Are we gonna take the administrators in too, Steve?
I don't think so.
I think they need a night off.
Yeah, I don't think.
Do we hear a second?
Do you want to come, Jen? Second.
Unless I have something to say, I mean, I don't...
Roll call vote.
Greg Cook.
Leslie Robbins.
Millie Nelson. And what's it? And we get it. Okay, thank you for coming, folks.
Thank you.